And now from McAllen City Hall, a meeting of the McAllen City Commission.
And good evening, everyone. Welcome to today's city commissioner meeting. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation by Commissioner Rudy Castillo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we bow our heads, please? Heavenly Father, I ask that you forgive us for all the bad things that are happening in this world and that you guide us in the right direction to all the decisions we make. I also ask for Officer Veronica Gonzalez and her family and all first responders that always put their lives on the line for us. In God's name we pray.
Amen. And thank the commissioner and I hope we do get forgiven for everything. There was a real bad incident this past weekend and I assured the community that we would address it and I think everybody knows what we're talking about, an attack on one of our police officers. To our community, we are going to address it. Then we have a presentation. We have a new person that has come from, I guess from Guatemala, but let me see what we have. It is my honor to introduce to you all an individual that has just, I think, pasale para acá. Pasale para acá. Ladies and gentlemen, we have, you know, here in McAllen, what we have been doing throughout is really focusing on international affairs. We're in Mexico, we're in different areas. You know, our partners Guatemala de Salvador, Mexico, we're always trying to promote. And every now and then we have changes and we have a very good positive change. So it's an honor for me today to introduce to you all a gentleman that is replacing a very important person we had here. We have our new consul Rudy Monterosso from Guatemala. Nos da un honor invitando y presentamos aquí. Y si nos quiere dirigirte con unas palabras, por favor.
Muchas gracias, señor alcalde. Muchas gracias por esta oportunidad de dirigirme a la ciudad de McAllen. Gracias a todas las personas que están presentes el día de hoy. Estimados miembros del cabildo de la ciudad de McAllen, Texas, mi nombre es Rudy Monterosso. Recientemente fui nombrado y para mí es un honor presentarme ante ustedes hoy como consul de la República de Guatemala en la ciudad de McAllen, Texas. Me siento privilegiado de tener la oportunidad de establecer y fortalecer los lazos de cooperación y amistad entre mi país y esta hermosa y próspera ciudad. Guatemala valora profundamente la relación con la comunidad de McAllen y reconoce la importancia de la cooperación binacional para el desarrollo y el bienestar de nuestros ciudadanos. Como consul, me comprometo a trabajar estrechamente con ustedes para promover el diálogo, la colaboración y el intercambio cultural y económico. Guatemala es un país con una economía sólida, en una ubicación estratégica en América Central y una fuerza laboral calificada y trabajadora. Guatemala cuenta con acuerdos comerciales que facilitan el acceso a mercados importantes en la región y ofrece entornos favorables para los negocios sectores claves como la agricultura, la manufactura, y el turismo, y los servicios. La proximidad geográfica y cultural entre McAllen y Guatemala puede ser puente sólido para el crecimiento mutuo. Invitamos a empresarios y líderes de McAllen a explorar las oportunidades de inversión y comercio con Guatemala. Agradezco su atención y como consulado reitero nuestro compromiso para facilitar y apoyar la iniciativa que promueva el intercambio comercial y la cooperación binacional para el beneficio de nuestras comunidades. Muchas gracias.
Danny, is the picture better here or over there? Over there? Okay, we have item number one, public hearings.
Mayor Commissioners, we have routine items that are listed in your bulletin start the meeting out. We have 26 items that are listed as routine. They'll start out with the rezoning from R2 to R1 at property located at 12,501 North Ruth Road. Items two through 20 are city initiated. They come with a recommendation from the Panin and zoning commission for approval. Item 21 is to rezone from C3 to C2, property at 421 South Ware Road. Item 22 is to rezone from AO to R1, property at 2201 South Benson. Item 23 is an initial zoning to C2 for a property located at 4100 State Highway 107. Item 24 is an initial zoning to AO for a property at 4100 State Highway 107 rear. Item 25 is a request for a conditional use permit and adoption of an ordinance for institutional use for a school at 1501 Freddie Gonzalez Road. And item 26 is a public hearing and ordinance for annexation of 30.058 acres located at 4100 South State Highway 107 rear. We do have the pre-annexation agreement signed and we did receive that.
Excellent. Do we have anybody to speak against any of these items? Anyone to speak against any of these items, 1 through 26?
Would this be approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item B.
Item 1B1 is a rezoning request for a property from R1 to C2 under the UDC located on the south side of Lark Avenue, west of Ware Road. Surrounding zonings are R1 to the northeast, R3T Townhome to the south, and AO to the west. You've got single families and vacant land in the area as well as a drainage to the west. The request is to rezone to C2 for an outdoor event center for pool events. The C2 request does not conform with the envision McAllen future land use for this area, which is designated as complete communities, primarily single-family residential is the primary use. You do have some townhomes and multifamily and limited commercial in that area. The trend for this area along Lark Avenue is single-family. The Panin zoning commission considered their request at their meeting of August 5, 2025. There was no opposition present. Following discussion, the board unanimously voted to recommend disapproval of the rezoning request with four members present and voting. It would take a supermajority of the board to overturn PNC's recommendation.
Okay. Do we have anybody to speak against this item? Anyone to speak against this item? Do we have the applicant?
Sorry, guys. My sticker doesn't want to stay on. Good afternoon. Kelly Vella with Rioplex Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the owner and the developer for the site. One, we wanted to kind of address a couple of items of concern and then two, of course, be here to answer any questions you might have. The applicant is also the current owner of the property. We realize it is zoned R1. We were looking at it as kind of a step down from the ditch located next door between us and the residential home to our east. The purpose of the rezone is because we are wanting to do a pool rental facility. There is a site plan in there. Essentially, it's just a pool with a covered area and some restrooms and then, of course, the parking to go with it. The difficulty that we're running into is because it is considered to be an event facility, then that needs to be located in a C2. It's not an allowed use in any of the other zones. We would, of course, have to go through a conditional use permit process, go through hours, and address all of those types of items. But given the location and the fact that staff's recommendation, of course, was for disapproval, we decided to kind of halt on the CUP until we get through this part of the process. I know that the future land use map says that it's a complete community. One of the things we wanted to point out is that in complete communities, the purpose of the non-residential uses in there is to be able to service the residential. And in this case, that's exactly what we're doing. The pool facility is primarily going to be rented by homeowners, by residents, trying to do family events, family get-togethers, that type of situation. So in that case, it's kind of the perfect location for it, given that we are surrounded by quite a bit of residential in the area. Unfortunately, because of the event center designation, that puts us back at the C2. The owner was looking to actually do this as, you know, the proper path through the board for permitting, designated as an actual facility versus some of the other options where you've got homeowners renting their pools through, you know, Airbnb-type events like Swimply and similar sites. But we do realize that, you know, it is along Lark, it is in a residential facility, but that is the main purpose for the site. It is pretty limited, it's pretty small, so there's not a whole lot of options available for it for any other type of commercial use. We will be able to accommodate the additional parking that's needed. It will be fenced and enclosed, of course, because we certainly don't want anybody in there that's not there for a specific event. I know that staff mentioned that planning and zoning did recommend disapproval, but prior to that, the original recommendation was actually denial with a favorable recommendation. And then staff pointed out that that's only appropriate for CUPs, not for change of zones. So then they, of course, had to kind of pick between the two. But I'm certainly here for any other additional questions you guys might have that I haven't hit up.
Any questions, comments?
The only question I have is during the PNC meeting, they could have voted to approve it.
Yes, sir. They could have recommended approval of the rezoning request.
That's correct, which they do plenty of times. Why would they have been confused as to deny with a favorable recommendation?
Some of the members, the conditional use permit, if they disapprove it because of conditions, they will recommend sometimes a favorable recommendation if they feel that's appropriate. On a rezoning, it's either a yes or a no.
So in other words, they were kind of favoring to rezoning it?
No, they denied the rezoning.
They denied the rezoning.
Correct, but it was a favorable recommendation. I know they were confused, but...
Right.
It doesn't, in a recent...
I know, but was there intent to?
That's what my first concern is kind of getting at, is what their intent was. But I think they understand they sent it, they denied it.
Correct. If they were in favor, they could have voted in favor or split vote. It was unanimous to not approve.
And there was no opposition.
There was no opposition, no, sir.
Mayor, on this issue, I have a concern. And thank you again, Ms. Kell, for coming and reaching out to me, you know, this afternoon and speaking about this rezoning. You know, the concern I have is that, at least through envision McAllen, we try to focus to put the commercial districts, whether it be C2 or C3 or any higher use along the major corridors. And of course, Ware Road is a major corridor. Lark is well on its way to doing that. And so to put this particular zoning halfway between Ware and Benson is kind of plugging in in between of R1 zoning across Lark on both sides. So you have a couple of neighborhoods. You have Loxy on the north side. You have Northwest Manor on the west. And then you have Tiffany Estates at the other corner on Benson Road. And so this area is slowly transitioning from very, very rural to now suburban, well on its way to urban in the next four to five years. And I'm not particularly concerned about your project with, as is indicating we discussed, it's a zoning itself because this is essentially neighborhood zoning, right, C2. And then I'm concerned that you're going to create traffic at an intersection where you're going to have a canal crossing in the very, very future. And it's not going to be two lanes. It's going to probably be four and maybe five at the center, right? And so the issue becomes, you know, site vision distances because you're going to have the berm from the canal. But more importantly is the objective is trying to move as close as possible to those commercial nodes when you have these type of operations. And in this particular case, each allows automotive dealerships, allows, I think you listed it out, but other types that might be a little bit more intense use, of course, with a conditional use permit. And so that's a concern is, of course, many of us and not all of us on this board are concerned about maintaining the character and the integrity of the neighborhoods, right? And I think we can meet that objective if, in our examples discussed, if that location was a little closer to Ware or right-of-budding that commercial node right there in the southwest corner of Ware and Lark. I think that would be the most appropriate because the C2 would be a nice buffer to transition to residential one. You know, and for those reasons, you know, I'm not in favor of the rezoning.
No, no, I understand. And I guess the concern I have is kind of last stated. You go build a little casa that looks more like a cabana, put a swimming pool. Now you've met the zoning and then there's Airbnb and leasing. And that's where, that is a concern I have because they can always go do that. But it's up to the commission. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, if there's no more questions or comments, I'll make a motion to disapprove the request of the applicant to rezone a state porch, R1 to C2. That'd be denied.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Okay, item C.
Item 1C1 is a request for a conditional use permit for one year for an event center. At this location, it's located on the east side of 23rd, north of Quince. The property is zone C3 as well as the surrounding properties. You do have R1 zoning to the east. The request is to rezone the property, a conditional use permit, excuse me, for an event center with the hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. Fire Department needs to complete their inspection and their request must comply with the zoning ordinance with section 138, 118, 4. The establishment is within 400 feet of residentially zoned property as well as publicly owned property, which is Municipal Park to the east. The Panin zoning commission considered their request at the meeting of August 5, 2025. No opposition was present. Following discussion, the board unanimously voted to recommend disapproval of the request, but with a favorable recommendation to the distance requirement with four members present and voting.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak against the item? Anyone to speak against the item? What wishes of the commission?
What condition was not met, the distance requirement?
The distance requirement from residentially zoned property and Municipal Park that's to the east.
So this is a very good example where you do have residential property within the, I guess, is it 600 foot?
400 foot radius.
400 foot radius. But you have a buffer. You have all commercial right on the front edge of 23rd. So that's kind of blocking it. You know, obviously, it's on a major thoroughfare. This seems to be more appropriate.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. I need a motion to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of McAllen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Concern agenda, items A through A through M. Do we need to pull anything out? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item 3A. 3A?
Pinta.
Pinta, anybody?
Any questions? I think you all have reviewed. Do you have motion to approve?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Item B. What's item B?
Federal assurances, Mr. Julia.
That one confuses me.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city commission.
This item before you is in regards to a grant application that we submitted to the General Land Office in the amount of $300,000 for the reimbursement of staff salaries that participated in the development of the UDC. However, in order for our application to move to the next steps of review, they asked for us to include some specific language related to CFR Part 200 in our procurement and purchasing policies. We already referenced CFR Part 200, however, they wanted a little bit more details to it. And so with your consideration, we would like to ask for you to consider to adopt that.
By your motion to approve?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 4A.
Mayor, I'm going to, we have purchasing here to present these items and the city attorney can...
So that's the new statute allowing to go up to $100,000? Do I hear motion to approve?
Don't move.
All in favor? Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item B.
Item B, Mayor, is consistent with that. It allows the city manager to approve change orders up to $50,000. But what we did to put some safeguards in there is to not allow those change orders to exceed 25% of the original contract price.
Okay, do I hear motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 5A.
Mayor, these are two resolutions that the Public Utility Board is requesting.
Okay.
The City Commission consider this is a resolution supporting their applications to the Water Development Board to further the expansion projects that they're working on.
That we're looking at. Do you all have any questions? Or do I have a motion to approve items?
Second.
5A and B, if we need to, if you all have questions?
I think...
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
I guess I know what it's about.
I was waiting for that. Thank you, Commissioner, I get it. They are both, both A and B are for permission from the City Commission to agree with the loan from the Water Development Board. A is just for water rights, $3.2 million. B is for $30 million, that would be the first closing for the desalination project, the groundwater desalination project. So A is for water rights, $3.2 million, B is for the plant, for the Brackish Groundwater Desalination Plant. And that just gives us, the City Commission gives the City Commission the PUB approval for those loans from the Water Development Board.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a significant step forward in the development of that project. This is the first, well, I shouldn't say the first step, but it is the first major step the Public Utility Board is taking in securing the resources that it will need to develop the DSal plant. So this is a really historic opportunity for this commission and for the City of McAllen to take a significant step forward in securing access to water for not only the City of McAllen, but for many communities surrounding us as well.
What we talk about, it's kind of like a spoke, we're in the meadow and all the cities are around and we should be able to assess in the future.
Yes, sir.
Should it be required? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 6.
Louis? Mayor, item 6 is consideration of variance requests not to require right-of-way dedication US Highway Expressway 83 from proposed Freedom South McAllen subdivision.
This is a one-lot subdivision located on the north side of the expressway, just east of Second Street. It is Zoned Commercial and surrounding areas are Zoned Commercial and Residential, with the uses also commercial and residential. The request is not to dedicate an additional 15-foot of right-of-way to make 175 feet on center line, where a total of 350-foot right-of-way is required in the city's thoroughfare map. The proposed plan does not propose any dedication, but rather maintains the existing 320-foot right-of-way that's existing for the expressway. Basis for the request is that the right-of-way ranges from 300 to 350-foot right-of-way in this area and that any dedication would affect the existing cross-access easement that runs along at the front of this property and the properties to the east. The Plan and Zoning Commission considered their request August 5th, 2025. Following discussion, the board unanimously voted to approve the subdivision in revised preliminary form and recommend approval of the variance with four members present and voting.
That's the property that is right next to you, that, sort of narrow and all that part, right?
Mr. Primmer.
Yeah, and between the, I suppose, and Machu Picchu?
Correct.
Yeah, is it, I guess in the engineer's letter, he had stated...
They're all the same.
To maintain the same right-of-way as approved for the two subdivisions to the east. Is that correct in their statement?
Yes, there is a subdivisions, one or two that are to the east, the existing Hampton Inn Hotel and a commercial plaza. They maintained a 320-foot right-of-way that was acquired when the expressway was approved.
So by granting the variance, it would be in line with those, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to be in front, blocking their view of existing, of an existing dwelling?
No, sir.
In other words, we've had that problem before sometimes, that if we, if we grant, you know, less right-of-way, that you hide, hide the person behind you or adjacent to you.
Right, no, in this case, the right-of-way would line up with the properties to the east as well as the HEB.
It would align with the other ones.
It lines up immediately to the east and to the west of this property, it would align. As you go further east and west, it changes.
There's a Freedom Bank.
I think...
Second. All in favor?
One quick question. Did TechStott have any comment or opinion?
I don't, not that I'm aware of, no, sir.
Are they, are we required to ask or are they allowed to have input first?
We would go by our thoroughfare plan.
Okay.
And the thoroughfare plan does call for 350-foot right-of-way.
Right.
So we would follow with what we would have in our plans. The commission, when they considered it, there was no objections from the development group to leave the right-of-way at 320. So the Plan and Zoning Commission went ahead and recommended approval of the variance.
Okay, bear in mind.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. City Manager's Board?
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is discussion of the 2025 proposed property tax rate.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners.
Good news for us tonight, right?
Good news. A tax rate of 0.448989 has been proposed for fiscal year 2526. That is, this year's tax rate is 449989, so it's a decrease. After proposing, or today, in order to follow procedure, you almost vote for or against a proposed tax rate, and it must be by record vote. After we propose the rate, we'll be publishing a notice of public hearing, and you have that in your packet. And of course, it reads Notice of Public Hearing on Tax Increase. The only reason it reads that way is because we are proposing a rate that is above the no new revenue tax rate. So in order to follow laws, we have to publish, we have to put it on our website, and we have to hold a public hearing.
I always hate that.
I know.
But we're reducing our tax rate.
Yes, it is being reduced from the 449989 to 448989.
Excellent.
Okay, so after we take record vote, we're going to schedule the public hearing, and that is going to be a public hearing on the proposed rate will be held on September the 22nd, 2025, in the same room at 5:00 p.m. And immediately following the public hearing, we will be voting for the tax rate. So it'll be the meeting to have the public hearing and vote on the tax rate.
Excellent.
Mayor, this is the rate that we used in preparing the proposed budget that we've workshopped with you over the last several weeks, and it does reflect the anticipated revenue necessary to support that proposed budget.
Excellent, but this is a little confusing, but we do need to take a vote today?
Yes, it must be a record vote.
Is there a specific language or...
That'll be on the next one, that'll be on September 26th. This one is just a record vote.
Okay, so I guess we, we need a vote on this?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I guess we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed tax rate.
Okay, all in favor on that side?
Mr. Reals?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Future agenda items?
Mayor, we sent you an invite for a workshop that you requested that we have this coming Friday at noon to discuss issues related to the operations within the Entertainment Cultural Overlay District.
And that's on 17th Street specifically, specifically because of the incident that happened. And I know the community has really asked us to take action, do something, so I hope all of us can make it. It will be an open session, the media is all invited to come and attend and kind of get an idea as to what we can possibly do. A lot of times our hands are tied, but we will do whatever we can to make 17th Street a little safer, okay? Anything else? No table items, do we want to pull it? Or not yet?
My understanding was that the developer was going to be here or represented, but I don't see him in the audience.
I guess we'll leave it there?
Yes.
We'll leave a table?
Mayor, we had one more item to discuss in executive session.
We'll recess into executive session.
We'll recess into executive session.
...
And we are now out of executive session.
Mayor Prossam, with regards to item nine A, B, and C, I recommend that the board entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to proceed as described in executive session with a note that you abstain from item nine C.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion carries.
Mayor Prossam, that concludes the items we have on the agenda for you this evening.
With that, we will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Regular city commission meetings are held on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Meetings are rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays on the McAllen Cable Network.